I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Gearbaugh, Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, Dillon, and CEO from city staff. We have city manager Campbell, deputy clerk Bloom, city treasurer Bennett, DPW director Fordice, and Parks and Rec director Scruggs. For the rest of you who are in the audience this evening, we appreciate your participation and attendance. Please be sure to sign in in the back to my left. City council has a few supplementals this evening. One relates to the city's economic development program, its economic objectives for the first quarter of 2016. It has to do with Mickey, or Treasurer Bennett, excuse me, her presentation on economic development changes at the top of our agenda. There are two color copies that I believe were provided by the Historic Society and Jim Peters that relate to the archaeological project that's ongoing at the Salt Springs Park. There is also a page entitled "City of Celine Waschnau County Resolution" regarding our staff positions. And then last, there is a three-page, actually it's not last, excuse me, there is a three-page stapled brochure from Wolverine Fireworks. And then, I have a, are these dumpsters?
No, these are jackboxes. This is in reference to their architectural take.
Oh, okay. Very good. So I apologize for all the supplemental material, but hopefully each one of you received that, or each one of those copies. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Agreed.
Moved by, CEO be the mover, Dillon be the second, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that motion, which brings us to presentations. We only have one, and it's economic development changes. And our city treasurer, Ms. Bennett, will be taking the lead on this presentation. Do you have, do you require the screen for any reason? No?
Do not.
But your PowerPoint was, nice color copies were made and distributed to each one of my colleagues on city council.
So, first off, I'd like to just start off by saying that the city has been working, since our restructure, in the last four years, we've restructured the way that, and as we continuously do, as we evaluate the duties of all the positions within the city and the jobs that need to be done. And we have reassigned some of the duties. And four years ago, we reassigned the economic development and created at the direction of the city economic development in the city council, we pulled together with Ann Arbor Spark and produced a booklet, and that's the handout that you have, that colored handout. And we produced that booklet as a guide of to what our strategic plan for economic development was. And we didn't get a lot of those booklets printed, so I just went ahead and took the PD off and copied that and went through that. So as economic development, as we restructured our duties and combined finance into treasury into one, and we looked at this strategic plan, and we said that we were going to adopt and approach an economic development person, and that person was going to be called a business ambassador, who was going to help guide businesses, whether it's existing businesses or new businesses, but having someone that when someone, a business comes into Celine, have someone a focal point that they can say, "I need this or this," and have that person help navigate them. And during the restructure time, those duties, because we were still kind of developing what that position was going to be, Kathy Corfman has picked those up, and she has been very involved in taking economic development courses and stuff like that. Well, as our economy has started picking up, and we've been having more and more businesses, Todd and the development, and Kathy decided that it was time to review our strategic plan, the economic strategic plan, which is this. And we met and signed a contract with Luke Bonner, and Kathy and Todd sat down with Luke Bonner, and we went page by page through this. And one of them was the business ambassador role, and what that business ambassador role would be. And we decided that we all have different talents. Some of us like coming and talking to people and going and knocking on doors, and some of us like to be behind scene coordinator. So we've adjusted that position again. And so I'm going to take over a little bit more of the economic development while Kathy runs the show behind the scenes, which she does, she's very thorough, very organized. And this has been agreed upon by her and I to kind of even it out, to put our best foot forward and do the best for the city. So the, she's going to, she's going to continue to do what she does behind the scenes with the event planning and stuff like that, and be my support personnel in going forward. So our very first project that we had was looking at, which was a great learning tool for me, was taking the strategic plan and going page by page and saying, "What do we have in place? What do we want to improve on? And how are we going to report that back to the council?" And when we started talking about this with Luke Bonner and with Kathy and Todd, and I'm hearing all these things, it's like, "You guys, you've been doing all this." And we started making a list of all the things we've been doing. It's just that maybe we're not, we're not, we're not looking at it as economic development, we're looking at it as a role of the city. But, so we've developed what I handed out tonight. It's kind of in conjunction with our strategy. It's the two pieces of paper that look like this. And it talks about the different things that we talked about doing a couple years ago, like having, you know, biannual summits. While annually, the mayor hosts a small business forum, and he hosts a business summit. We're in the process of planning one right now for June 30th for our businesses in the industrial park. Providing a gold key service package, which is basically when a developer comes in to the, to the city, or even if, maybe it's not a developer, or maybe it's a, somebody who's just kind of curious about, "Is there any land available?" Being able to say, "Hey, look, you know, we can, if you don't need any extra zoning or regulations, we can turn that around." So that's something that we're in the developing stage of, is getting that, so we have this like little cheat sheet that we can say, "Hey, this is what we're going to do." And so each one of these things on this sheet are different pieces that all coordinate with that economic development strategic plan that the council worked so hard on a couple years ago. So now what we're going to try to do is present this to you each monthly is my goal. I do a monthly staff report, you know, to Todd on a monthly basis, so economic development is going to be, and I'm going to use this guideline, and if there's any other aspect that any of you think that we need to be reported back on. And so I'll be reporting back to you on that. And so the second sheet, really, since we've been in the developing and restructuring stages, I'm presenting you the first pipeline project detail, which is kind of just tracking everything we've done in the first quarter of 2016. The projects that we've had, the conversations we've had with maybe existing companies who just said, you know, "We're, we're thinking about expanding," or "We need," we've had, you know, Lee Harris' expansion, we've had a number of businesses that you've already approved, different things on, purchases for MMI for their expansion and things like that. But right now, there's, there are conversations that we have that they don't want to make that plan, you know, you've got public investors and everything out there. So if they're talking something, a lot of times they come to us in confidence. And so we've knocked out the company name, but we're just telling you that there is conversations going on, and there are things, and that's what this spreadsheet that I have attached is kind of showing you for the first quarter. I will be presenting the second quarter, because it's end of June already. I will be presenting that in July with my June monthly report for the entire quarter. But I kind of wanted to show you the layout and how we're taking what we did a couple years ago when we revamped it, and how we're going to start reporting that out to you. One of the other things that we are going to do a little bit more, working in hand with Ann Arbor Spark, and I will say, I've been to four retention visits already, and we have a number of them planned. We are meeting myself and Ann Arbor Spark are meeting after the large business summit next Thursday to go over a list of different businesses that they think we need to go and just talk to and just put our names out there. And during the retention visits that I've been to, there's been a lot of good feedback that we are now going to take to this business summit and provide topics, you know, like skilled trades and different, we've had one of our, one of our businesses was looking for exporting information, that MEDC came out and did an entire presentation on what the services they are. So at our business summit, MEDC is going to come out and talk about all the services that they can provide to our existing companies. So it's kind of coming around in the circle, and I'm very excited to be wrapping it up with the business summit on the 30th, because it kind of pulls everything we've been working on for the first two quarters, and we can put a great big old bow on it and start, then we'll have the small business forum. So that's what all the economic stuff that I sent out to you, and I just kind of wanted to take some time to show you what the reporting mechanism was going to be and how that kind of worked with what we already have. Because so often, we do something and, you know, a strategic plan, or we present a book, and this tool has been very helpful in me and with Kathy going forward on what we're going to do. So there is going to be more active presence of the city initiating visits with our businesses, not only, you know, not only industrial, but existing downtown businesses, and attending certain things to offer to them, you know, "What can we do to help you?" And we've been successful in this year in a mayor, the mayor led a business, and we said, shared some ideas, we sat around the table and talked, and I think we have seen some, we will be seeing some results from that coming shortly. So I'm excited about it, and I want your input back on how or what more information you'd like reported back to you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. This is very important stuff, and we appreciate your initiative and your leadership on this. What, what questions do we have for our city treasurer? Mayor Protim Rhodes?
Two things. First is, I wanted to express my appreciation to Kathy Corfman for the efforts that she's put in to this particular position over the years. She worked really hard at it. And second thing is, I wonder what coordination either has already happened or is planned to happen with the Chamber of Commerce and with Celine Main Street, since those two organizations also have some involvement in economic development.
Sure. If I may. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, yes and no. I mean, it's to Ms. Bennett's earlier point about, we do this stuff on a daily basis, right? By more formalizing it, and coming up, I believe, second meeting in July, we're looking at a work session for the redevelopment ready, correct? So part of the redevelopment ready communities is, of course, our partners, and again, we continue to partner. But that's, that's, that's the next step, is to make sure in official capacity. One of the things that, that we're moving forward with this modification, what I'd like to do is assemble a team, so we can meet as a team, including folks from the chamber, from Main Street, the various staff people, city staff people, that when either an existing business wants to expand, or somebody is considering, you know, coming to Celine, will you sit down and listen to them do evaluation, give them a report back, say, "These are, this is what, you know, it's, it's going to be a special land use, or you're, to do what you want to do on this particular parcel, you're going to need a variance," or whatever, whatever it might be. So.
And I will be attending and replacing Kathy on those meetings and stuff like that. And I know when we've had a couple meetings, we had John from the chamber come in. I briefly discussed some other things, like when Todd and I were at the readiness redevelopment conference, there was information provided about the tourism sites and stuff like that. So I plan on working with the chamber and Main Street about what we're putting out there on different websites and stuff like that, and trying to work together, because we all have a lot to do. If we can coordinate those efforts together, we'll definitely want to do that. But I will be attending those meetings.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. You know, and I did not expect that there would be day-to-day involvement of those three groups, because everybody's too busy and wouldn't get things done.
Right.
But one of the things that I really like about the community of Celine is that we tend not to have silos of information.
Right.
We work together, and that's important.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rhodes. Any other questions or comments for our city treasurer? Mr. Gearbaugh?
As you mentioned, Luke Bonner, is there any way that we'll be continuing to work him into our whole approach, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have alluded to that. Thank you. So as part of the, a contract that we signed with Luke, we have a number of already, a number of meetings that we'll follow up. So one of the things I've been, that he's been anxiously waiting to do is, after our feedback from city council, what's our next step? And then he will follow us through. I think I have five more business meetings with him that, to help with the consultation and anything that might come up that we may want to address going down. He's a great resource, and meeting with Ann Arbor Spark and MEDC, there's so much information out there that I feel like I can just call and ask them any questions. And so after tonight's meeting, I am scheduling a follow-up with Luke, and then we will continue to, you know, keep bringing you fancy-smancy reports.
Yeah, and part of my thing is why I mentioned Luke, is that I do, we do contribute quite a bit of dollars to the Spark from the city, which is one of our, you know, budget items. And I would like to see us exceptionally take leverage of that relationship that we had with them, and I know Luke is a part of it. And so I know this new idea is, we always need to revamp in how we do things, and I agree with Mr. Rhodes about Kathy's contributions and everything that she's done for the last few years.
Oh, absolutely. And Kathy has, you know, she, she has been very willing and very supportive and, you know, but when it, it came down to it, and she, she just said, you know, "What, we got to work together, and what can I help you do, and what can you help me do?" And she's offered, you know, she's doing a lot of the back office stuff that I did on a daily basis, and she's been phenomenal, and she is very organized, so I can just go in and say, "Kathy, do you remember that conversation?" And she pulls me a file. So it's going to be, it's going to be very, it's going to be very rewarding to still have her, because she's done a great job. And one of the first things we did, and we've been able to do this, was when I sat with Ann Arbor Spark for the first time as the treasurer's hat, I'm like, "What is this money we're paying you to do?" And then that kind of initiated what we could be doing more of. So, and I'm going to do my best to get our money's worth.
And, well, and this part, and I'm glad that, you know, you're taking on that role, because it does kind of correspond with it. Where I, my, not concerns, but where I do express for your interest is our core processes and things that need to happen in terms of the treasurer and oversight of finances and all that, and you and Joanne both do an excellent job. I just want to make sure that we're there and consider to continue developing this, because if we need to do resources towards economic development that are above and beyond the other responsibilities you're doing right now, we need to, as a city, be able to assess that.
Absolutely. So again, Kathy has taken on a number of the daily routine things that I do, and a lot of that has streamlined it because of the fact that she's doing it more on a daily basis, where a lot of times I haven't, because of there's. So it, we will continue to make sure that it's, you know, into the best interest of everyone's workload. We, my, my staff meets on a weekly basis, and one of the first questions are, "How are we all feeling? What needs to be done? And who can help?" And that's how this whole conversation came down. You know, when, when someone's starting to feel a little overwhelmed, we all, we all take it and share it. So that is one of our concerns. But Kathy has really stepped up, and, you know, she likes that in the office, day-to-day routine stuff. So I, I feel that we'll be able to keep things rolling on a, on a very smooth note.
And I feel a little more comfortable with some succession planning and some of that type of thing, too, just from the perspective of having two key people that, God forbid, something, you know, should take you away, that we want to make sure that we're covering all bases again.
Additional questions or comments? Mayor Protim Rhodes?
We've mentioned Luke Bonner, my name here, a few times, and I wonder, for the benefit of our audience and people who might watch this on CATV, if we expanded a bit on who he is and what he can bring to the table?
Sure. Be happy to. So, Mr. Gearbaugh alluded a little bit ago, Luke Bonner, he used to be with Ann Arbor Spark. And so probably a year or so ago, again, as an economic, he was a vice president of economic development. I'm not exactly sure of the full title, but, but very qualified and very good at what he does. And he has since, about a year or so ago, has, he has his, it's called the Bonner Advisory Group, his own consulting business. And so he is a very qualified economic development specialist, strategist. Comes from, before he was with Spark, he was with the city of Sterling Heights. And he now is contracting with Sterling Heights, and I believe, I'm not sure, a county or two, I mean, he's got, he has several, several customers, if you will, or clients. And so, and the city of Celine being one of them on a, on a short-term basis, but what I really, really like about Luke is that he's local.
Absolutely.
He lives within the school district, and considers Celine his home, and so even, even outside of this, certainly wouldn't take advantage of him, but he is a phone, just a phone call away.
So he's not currently associated with Spark?
That's correct.
Okay, so what he's repaying with Spark is, brings more stuff to us.
That's a combination of the two.
Yes, yes, yes.
That I want to make sure that we're both using Luke and Spark, and especially Spark with the consistency of what we have always contributed to them, that we need to take whatever leverage we can get for that.
Absolutely. And Spark is, Spark is, of course, a long-term relationship. And so going forward, and again, as Mickey Joe talked about, when we sat down and evaluated and said, so when Mickey Joe took the detail of what the services they provide, we wanted to make sure that, because we had a little bit of question for a while, that, you know, for retention visits and such, and so, but now they've stepped back up, and again, they're a very, very strong organization, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with them.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. Bennett, thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. If there's nothing further on the economic development changes, we'll proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Hearing no comments, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as distributed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-119, community events, Sesquicentennial Fireworks Celebration. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 14th, 2016, community events application to approve or not to approve the Wolverine Fireworks Display Contract Agreement to allow a professional fireworks display at Crabtree Field, Liberty School for the Celine Sesquicentennial Celebration, and to waive or not waive the associated fees for DPW and police services.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt of the memo, or of the application.
Move to acknowledge receipt by Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. I believe we have someone representing Wolverine Fireworks, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, my friend. Why don't we, why don't you make your way to the podium? We also have, in addition to myself and Councilwoman Dillon from the Sesquicentennial Task Force, we do have our school board president and friend, Paul Heinecke, in the back, because of course, we are recommending or proposing that this take place on school property. Paul, I don't know that there'll be questions or comments for you, but do you want to come forward to the podium as well, in the event that there are? We appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to be here this evening. Who wants to initiate this, or begin?
I just wanted to start and just make one comment first. Is that, is my name on the application? And I just wanted to let everyone know that that's just an administrative task of I drew the short straw. And so I don't have a vested interest in this event or in Wolverine fireworks, so I am planning on voting unless someone objects, and then I will abstain.
I appreciate those comments, Councilwoman Dillon, but there's no inherent conflict or financial gain for you personally by voting for this motion, so I would expect, and I would appreciate you voting on both the motion to acknowledge receipt and then hopefully the subsequent motion to approve, or not to approve. Do you, we appreciate you being here. I believe you came some distance, and so we appreciate that. Do you want to make any comment at this time?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Paul, any comment? Mr. Heinecke?
Nothing in particular. The Celine area schools, school board will put this on their discussion item next week if the city council approves. We probably don't have any objections, since we already tentatively put it on our schedule and got an approval from our insurance company, so I think we're good to go.
Very good. I guess the one thing for, tell me your name again, I'm sorry.
Josh Carter.
Josh Carter, representing Wolverine Fireworks. I know that you, along with perhaps some members of city staff, and then Councilwoman Dillon and Lance Holland, who's the chair of the Sesquicentennial Task Force, looked at a number of different locations, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but my understanding is, you thought that the location of Liberty School, specifically Crabtree Field, was really ideal for a number of reasons. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, besides coming out and evaluating areas for fireworks, we also look at things like public safety, parking. We looked at quite a few different areas within the city, but there was problems with egress and putting that many people into an area. If something did happen, fireworks relayed or not, getting emergency personnel in and out effectively and quickly, is a concern of ours and a concern of mine, and that really seemed to be the optimal place to put everything. There's a large viewing area, parking is not going to be a problem, you don't have to bus people in and out, and it's basically easy to get emergency personnel in and out if you need to.
Very good. Questions for either Councilwoman Dillon, myself, our school board president, or Mr. Carter representing Wolverine Fireworks? Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, this is October, correct?
Yes.
So do we, are we planning a rain date, or?
It would probably be the following Saturday.
Okay, so we are planning a rain date.
Yes.
I just wondered what the contracts, I said, are, excuse me, that if, if we get rained out completely, there's only a portion that go, of the contract that gets paid, is that correct?
Well, what happens, and Justin, correct me if I'm mistaken, once the fireworks are in place, they need to be shot off?
There's different ways you can do it. I mean, if it's going to be the following week, then it's going to, the inclement weather fee is going to be more, because the crew has to stay there, they have to wait until it starts raining, reload everything back up into the proper boxing, and, you know, transport it back to a magazine. This is all under ATF regulation. If it's, can be something that's going to be like the following day, then, you know, they can stay overnight, we keep security on there. It's completely legitimate with ATF ruling 2007-2. You can keep them on-site, as long as there's somebody there to watch them, they're in a, you know, in a safe, secure area, then it's not a problem. So I would have to get back with you on the actual fees on a bunch of that size. I don't know what it is offhand, but I could certainly get something over to you tomorrow, you know?
So, yeah, I guess my question was, we're not paying the entire amount if it's, if we don't fire it off?
No. No. No, we don't, we don't do anything like that.
Anything else, Ms. McClellan?
That's it for me.
No? Additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Would there be any objection from the school side if it did rain on the 15th, if we went for the 16th?
No.
That's why we have not yet picked a definitive date, because it will, I mean, this is schools in session in the fall, so we will have to make sure that there are no other events at any of those schools at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tahar, and then Councilman CEO.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I wondered if the police department had been consulted about traffic flow and entrances and, and just general movement of traffic and emergency vehicles?
I believe we did have the, I'm sorry, Janet.
I'm sorry. I, yes, I've met with both the police chief and Sergeant Basso, and they have a tentative plan in place. Tebow Road, which is the private road that runs between Maple and North Ann Arbor, is, will be closed to pass through traffic, and it will be for emergency vehicles only. And basically, the way that it will work is if you're coming in on Ann Arbor Street, you're exiting on Ann Arbor Street, there will be no crossover. So you're not going to be able to make a big U around the city. So if you're on that side, if you're on the west side, that's how you exit. If you're on Maple Street, you will use Maple to exit. If you are in the back on Woodland, then you would, you then would have the option of picking a direction. But they work through a system. And that is part of why the fireworks are going to be in October, is because they can hopefully enlist extra police. But they work through a system. And that is part of why the fireworks are going to be in October, is because they can hopefully enlist extra police from Pittsfield, U of M, because we're out of football season.
Additional comments or questions, Ms. Tahar?
Well, yes, so, one other related to associated fees for DPW and police services, we don't, unless I overlooked something, which is possible, we don't have that called out for us yet.
We do not, but of course, we're not, the motion on the floor, which was moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by yourself, is simply to acknowledge receipt of the application. So, if we were to enumerate those, it would be in the subsequent motion. Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a comment?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, essentially, I mean, this is the city, it's a city, it would be a city event, and so, we'd be charging ourselves, in a sense.
Okay, and if we bring in personnel from other law enforcement, public safety units, that would just be considered part of the same, our, our, our event, so, our budget?
Right.
Our event we pay?
Right, and, and again, I don't know that, that Chief Rinnick has worked that out for, I'm sorry, the terms escaping me. Mr. CEO, can you help?
Mutulate.
Mutulate, thank you. So, so mutilated, we have mutilated agreements with our neighboring, so if they need our help, we go help them, if they need, if we need their help, then hopefully they come to our aid as well.
Okay. Good, that clarifies why it's not in the memo. Thank you.
You good, Ms. Tahar?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Mr. CEO?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just, for a minute, we are doing fundraising for the fireworks, we're looking for sponsors, so that will work to offset some of those costs.
Okay, thank you.
That is indeed correct, thank you for adding that, Mr. Heineck. Mr. CEO?
I see, on the one memo we have, you've shown a three hundred and fifty-five foot radius, is that just the safety zone for any debris or whatever we might call?
Well, that's a good question. All display companies, unless it's approved by the HJ or authority having jurisdiction, goes by the table of distant guidelines of NFPA eleven twenty-three, basically, that's seventy feet per inch of shell, so three-inch shell, two hundred and ten feet in any direction. We have room probably to do five-inch shells, but we always kind of lean on the side of safety, and we're keeping it back towards the four-inch shell size, still very nice, you know, display, and there'll be a lot going on, but we actually have kept it back just to give added security area, in the event somebody got too close to where it's going to be, we just kind of push the boundary out further than what we have to.
I see in your proposal, seventy-two five-inch shells, the way I read it.
I'm sorry?
I see in your proposal...
Did they put fives in?
They did.
Okay. I, maybe that's they adjusted, I'm not sure. I just came out and did the site inspection.
Okay. I guess another question I have is, are there like wind minimums or maximums?
Typically, twenty miles an hour, depends too on which way the wind is going, and, you know, we work with the HJ, the fire chief, fire marshal, make sure, you know, that they're comfortable with everything as well.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilman CEO?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gearbaugh, followed by Ms. McClellan.
Could Ms. Dillon give just a, a brief overview of what the intent, because it's a community application event, what's going to happen besides the fireworks at this event, so we got a little bit of a better idea of just what it is?
Dillon, you want to comment on that?
Okay. It's scheduled to be more of a tailgate style, where we invite people to come prior to the beginning of the fireworks, bring a picnic, and, you know, some, some games, think of football tailgating in the fall. We are looking into bringing in food trucks, it has not been confirmed as of yet, as a vendor, so food would be available on-site for those people that didn't want to bring it in. We would, at opening the, the gates per se, at six P.M., with fireworks going off at approximately eight-thirty, depending on what time it's dusk, at that time of the year, it should be dark a little earlier. And it's a thirty-minute show, and then after the show, it's going to clear out, is right now the tentative plan.
So approximately a three or four-hour event?
Right, about four hours, I think, start to finish.
Thank you. I just wanted to, so everybody kind of understood what we're trying, hoping to do for the hundred-and-fifth year.
Ms. McClellan, please.
Yeah, a question for Paul, I think. The parking lot is scheduled to be finished by then, before school starts, I assume, but I didn't know if it was kind of like the Michigan Air Project, whether they're going to be finishing some things later on and after the school starts.
It's later to be done by the beginning of school year, September, so.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments?
I just wanted to comment back to Heidi, and that was what the additional map is.
Right.
That's the new schematic for the Heritage Woodland Meadows.
That was why my, the question came up.
Right. But we will be also utilizing the Liberty School parking lot, the middle school parking lots, and people could literally sit at the one-room schoolhouse, you could, you could see the fireworks from Wildwood or North View Subs, so there's going to be a lot of vantage points, because it is a flat terrain.
Thank you.
Mr. CEO?
See, there's talk of furnishing or making available non-alcoholic beverages, would there be an attempt to limit alcoholic beverages, because it is the school grounds?
There is no alcohol on school grounds.
Right, that's, so.
It's still school property, no weapon, no tobacco, no alcohol zones, so those rules will be enforced.
Okay.
It's not quite a tailgate.
Did you want to comment, Ms. Bennett? As staff leads under the Sesquicentennial Task Force?
I'm sorry, I keep poking my head in.
No, it's fine. I should have recognized you, my apologies.
That's okay. Mr. Gearbaugh, you alluded to the fact of what's being planned for our Sesquicentennial, and Lance Holland, who is our, our chairperson, did call me today, and he's unable to make it tonight, he's ill, but he did ask me and Janet to go over some of the, I think, I don't know if that was going to happen under events or not, but since we're on the topic, the committee is working with all of the existing events now, and having a presentation at those events. We kicked it off Thursday night at the Summer Music Series, Mr. Heineck and Lance Holland were there with our table. We have put together a, a book that's going to be published, and we have pre-sale orders that are available, that we're handing out at the Summer Music Series. We are also planning on, we have a banner that was on display this weekend down at the, the best, baseball, baseball fields, that has been in display out at City Hall. And then with the fair, we're going to be putting, the fair is putting together, at the end of the parade, they're going to be doing a vintage ball game at Honeyfield, and the committee's still working on different things there to put in conjunction with that. And then the parade, the fair itself is also going to have different contests, like a beer-gearing contest, a homemade pretzel baking contest, and some other contests throughout the fair, that will all be in conjunction with the Sesquicentennial as well. So, it's not just the fireworks, and we're, the committee is meeting pretty much on a bimonthly basis, and Janet, I'm sorry if I'm stealing any thunder, but he opened the door, I'm sorry.
Well, there's, there's, there's some home tours that are, that are being organized as well.
Yeah, they're doing some home tours in October, and a cemetery tour, I believe.
I believe so.
Yes, the, I believe it's the Rotary is doing the Oakwood Cemetery Tour, I can speak a little bit about that if you want, because I'm on that committee, but the, it's going to be really cool, they're going to have people acting at each of the graves and telling that person's story, so, and then there's various home tours and passive tours as well, farm, agriculture, architecture.
So the October fireworks is scheduled as close to the ballot date, back when we could go back to the ballot of eighteen sixty-six, when we became a village, and that's why we thought that would be, I don't really want to see the grand finale, because this is an ending, but that's going to be the big celebration, and what a better way to celebrate than fireworks. So, there's multiple events that will be going throughout the year, and the committee has been working a lot of hours, and Lance and Janet have put in, and all the committee members, but Lance and Janet especially, have been doing a lot of work trying to get everything rained in, and it's, it's gonna, it's happening. So it's not just the fireworks, look for us throughout the year.
Thank you.
Sorry, I mean to interrupt.
Any other questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor to acknowledge receipt? All right, gentlemen, why don't you hang tight here, just in the event that something comes up in the subsequent motion. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. After speaking with the city manager, I would suggest some additional language at the end of this motion, so, the motion that I'm looking for would be a motion to approve or not to approve that Wolverine, the Wolverine fireworks display contract agreement to allow for professional fireworks display at Crabtree Field, Liberty School, for the Celine Sesquicentennial celebration, and to waive or not to waive the associated fees for DPW and police services, subject to review and approval by the city attorney.
I would move to approve that amended motion, approve and waive?
Been moved by Rhodes to approve and waive, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. Any comments? Mr. CEO?
I guess I would just ask, and even given the inclusion of five-inch mortars, you still feel this is a safe perimeter for?
Yes, I'm going to go back and review everything and talk with Jenny, who's our display manager, make sure that we're both on the same page. This time of year, it's busy, we do over four hundred shows from Bahamas to New Mexico, so, we, it's busy, and I don't want to downplay your guys' event at all, I'm not, we're, we're looking forward to working with you guys, but I, I really want to talk with her before I give you that definitive answer, but either way, it's, it will exceed the minimum requirements.
Okay, thank you, this is our one crack, and try and ensure that what we do is safe.
Ms. Dillon?
And we do have ample space to increase.
Mr. Rhodes?
I just want to say, I'm excited to see fireworks coming to town, and, you know, seldom do we, in whatever capacity, get involved in and know about the backstory behind everything that goes on in order to present forty-five minutes or sixty minutes worth of fireworks, but it's, it's an exciting thing.
It's a lot more entailed than people think with the regulation, we're one of the highest-regulated industries in the country.
It's a good thing.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
No problem.
Additional comments? Well, let me echo the sentiments of Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes. I have heard for a number of years, people complain and lament that while we have a plethora of great community events and activities, there are not, there's not fireworks display. So it's great that the Sesquicentennial group found an opportunity to, to include fireworks as part of their celebration, and I also am looking forward to this. I want to commend our chairperson Lance Holland and Councilwoman Dillon for their work on this. It's been stated numerous times throughout this discussion, and of course, by the representative from Wolverine fireworks, that there's a lot that goes into this, a lot of planning and a lot of prep. We also appreciate, Paul, your attendance tonight and the cooperation of the school district, because obviously this wouldn't happen without, without you all being amenable to letting us use that space, so thank you very much. And thank you for coming. Saginaw Flint area?
We're actually located in Cockholland, which is in Bay County.
Okay.
We're Michigan's largest and most experienced company, we've got almost forty years in the business.
Good for you.
So, we are a local Michigan company.
Excellent, that's great to be able to patronize a Michigan business. Is there any further discussion on this motion? No, that's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to approve and to waive, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
Have a good evening.
We move on to new business item sixteen dash one twenty, Celine Relay for Life Night of Hope, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June ninth, twenty sixteen memo from Celine Main Street Executive Director Riley Hollenbach, and to approve or not to approve the request to light luminaries downtown after July twenty-third music series, and to allow or not to allow ten musics, ten minutes, excuse me, of bagpipe music.
Move to acknowledge, approve, and allow. It's June twenty-third.
What did I say, Mr. Rhodes? July, my apologies. So that was moved by CEO to acknowledge, to approve, and to allow, and was that seconded by Dillon?
No.
Tahar? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No Riley this evening, but Jill, do you want to comment on this? Karen, please.
Yes, I was approached by Gretchen McCann, who's the, she's the chair of the Librally for Life Committee, about the event was a horrible weather weekend, it was that weekend in May that it snowed, so they did not have the luminary ceremony at the end of the evening, so she asked if it was possible to have it after a Summer Music Series concert, and this Thursday is the best logistically to do that, because the Celine big band sets up on the opposite end of the street, so after the concert is done, they will have all of the luminaries set up, and soon as darkness covers the town down, then they will light those and have their ceremony. So we're open to any questions you may have.
Any questions for the applicants? That was easy enough, ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just to play it safe, there will be an extinguisher available.
Other than rain?
Other than rain, yeah. Because you never know, these occasionally catch on fire.
Has been discussed with Chief, but I'm not sure.
I just, because there's going to be a big crowd, everything around, I just, curious.
We have eleven of them now.
That's true, if there was a bucket up there, that would, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? And no discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote, it's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge, to approve, and to allow, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item sixteen dash one twenty-one, archaeological license agreement extension, this will be a motion to approve or not to approve the extension of an archaeological license agreement between the City of Celine and the Celine Historic Society.
Move to approve.
Moved by McClellan to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. We have the president and one of the board members, and the person who really initiated this some years ago, Mr. Peters, present, do either of you want to make comment this evening?
I would just say that we hope you can approve this, this license extension for at least another year, because we've got a lot of work to do down there yet, we're probably about halfway through, and so we have another, what, two hundred pits to dig yet?
Two hundred pits, yeah, yeah. Hopefully, we're going to be finishing digging the test pits this summer, by the end of the summer or early fall, and then we hope to maybe start some excavations next summer, if we find any more diagnostic and interesting features that we want to open up.
Very good. Any questions? Mr. CEO, please.
Any interesting findings, Jen?
Our contract states that we can't really discuss all those things, I can tell you, we've found a number of interesting things, but nothing is a showstopper like you've had in, in Chelsea.
Anything further? We thank you both for your time. Any subsequent discussion on this? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Mayor, since I'm the treasurer for the society, I'll be abstaining from voting on this.
Okay. Thank you for acknowledging that. Anything further, Ms. McClellan?
I do have one question. Is there any plans to have the sites open to the public, to, can people just come down and?
Right now, you have to be a member of either the Celine Historic Society, or a member of the Huron Valley Archaeological Society to be present at the date.
Once we're finished and everything's done, of course, we'd like to definitely invite people down.
Anything further, Mr. Campbell?
I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a request from a member of the team, as, currently, the current, even the proposed extension agreement says, they have to remove all tools at the end of each day, and so, but the request is that, since the team is getting, they're very seasoned, so, they're having difficulty hauling all the tools up and down the hills and such, and they, they would like to put, put a, that's what the picture is, is a, there would just be one of these, but the, again, a picture of a job box, a contractor job box, you may be familiar with, that they would be able to, to allow that down there, and they would, I mean, it would be their liability, they would be all on them, but, but to allow them to secure it, probably chain it to a significant tree, and that way, majority of the tools and such, their equipment would be able to be secured in there, and much easier for them, so certainly staff is favorable to that proposal. We could modify the proposed agreement to allow them to do that, based upon, we could add this as a, as an exhibit, to allow that, if, if council would deem that proper.
Is any, are there any objections to that?
No.
Okay, very good. Any additional questions?
No.
Again, thank you both, appreciate your time. Any subsequent discussion on this? No, that's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Dylan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously.
One extension.
One extension, yes, thank you. We move on to new business item 16-122. This is resolution to incorporate the Celine Community Substance Abuse Coalition as the Michigan, as a Michigan nonprofit corporation. This will be a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution to incorporate the Celine Community Substance Abuse Coalition as the Michigan nonprofit corporation, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the articles of incorporation.
Move to adopt and authorize.
Moved to adopt and moved to authorize by Dylan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Let me make a brief comment on this, because the chief isn't here. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that Councilwoman Dylan and I referenced this as a discussion item at one of our last meetings, but again, I think I was the first person to initiate this discussion as a member of the task force, excuse me, the coalition, but it was determined after our last meeting, talking to Nick Curcio, who is representing Dickinson Wright, and Scott Smith, that it would be good for the organization to transition from a city entity to an independent entity and become a nonprofit under, under state law, to be able to accept grant dollars. There are some subsequent changes or, or really additions that need to be made, in my opinion. There's a few more constituencies and interest groups that need to be represented at the table, and there'll probably be a few other restructures, or there'll be some restructuring of the group, but overall, I think this is a positive change and good forward momentum for the group, and I don't claim to be an expert on this process, but I'm, I'm happy to address any questions or concerns that you may have. Mr. Rhodes?
The last two nonprofits that I was involved with forming, the formation of, both of them, after initial submittal, came back from the IRS saying that they needed to have a very much more specific article regarding dissolution.
Okay.
And I didn't see anything on dissolution here at all, so if you go online and look at the IRS thing, they have a suggested paragraph.
Okay.
So, that's what we did last time, we just copied it and put it into bylaws.
Okay. Can you make note of that, maybe communicate that to Nick Curcio? Though, I should have, I should have noted, although probably, probably most of you can assume this, the document itself was drafted by our attorneys at Dickinson Wright, and Nick Curcio took the lead on this, and he does have experience working on, on these types of issues, but that, that's a good point, and we'll make sure to communicate that to him. Mr. Gearbaugh?
And clarifying for myself, because I think, Mr. Rhodes, the two organizations he mentioned were kind of formed outside of the government agency. This one is connected to us. I'm concerned from the perspective of what's our liability and what are the fallbacks in terms of this corporation being created this way. It's not an independent agency of the city. It looks like it's still connected to us.
Do you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is it's connected only in that the mayor and council appoint the representatives, but it's, they have their own board, or executive board, chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary, that type of thing, so they have their own, of course, bylaws, and so, it is, it is a separate entity.
So, some, I mean, I was just thinking, like, CQC, which allows us to put somebody on it, but is it at the request of their board or at the request of us?
At the request of the CQC board.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, is that the same, in same terminology for this?
I think so, because item four on that cover sheet appoints individuals, but only for the initial term.
Right.
And after that, then individuals are appointed by the board itself.
Because you need some entity to appoint, to begin with.
That's why I want, that's why I want to clarify that, at some point, this does basically transition away from us, so that...
What I, what I envision doing, Mr. Gearbaugh, after working with the group and other stakeholders to recruit certain individuals and to make sure that certain constituencies are represented at the table, is bringing before council, one big list that would include all of the appointees to the group, and then that essentially concludes what our responsibilities are as a city and specifically as a council. Then, subsequent to that, for, for example, if Mr. Gearbaugh was appointed to represent service clubs by the city council, and a year later, Mr. Gearbaugh resigned or relocated and had to forego his participation in the group, then it would be up to the group themselves to, to identify and to appoint a replacement.
And I guess the other piece of it is, I agree with Mr. Rhodes on the dissolution of the group, that however should it be dissolved, that it doesn't necessarily point back to the city as being the party of resolving it.
Communicate that to Mr. Curcio, that's a good point. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Tahar?
A question, which I may have overlooked this. Is there a description within the bylaws of, you mentioned relocation, which touches on my question, too? The where, who is eligible on the basis of where they live, or how are people eligible to serve in this group? We're, as city council, making the first appointments, but there, I, I didn't see anything that said where the pool of candidates for this...
I don't believe it does, and...
Is that something, I mean, I think I, I share your, your sentiment that it certainly should be a broader pool than just the city limits of Celine, but I didn't see it defined here.
Well, let me, this might be a long-winded answer, but the, the short answer is no, I do not believe it's defined, and I believe that that's appropriate, that it not be defined. One of the reasons for the transition from city entity to independent nonprofit is the ability to apply for federal grant dollars. Now, based on our current statistics in, in terms of community use rates of illicit or illegal substances, we appear to not be high enough to qualify for some of those grant dollars, and the biggest pool of money, and Mr. Campell can help me with the name, I believe, is the healthy communities?
I think so.
Something like that, through the federal government, I believe, specifically through the Department of Health and Human Services. And one of their stipulations is that you have a coalition, a group, that has key stakeholders and constituencies at the table. One that we currently lack, that I think it's absolutely critical that we have in the future, is somebody representing one of the local hospitals or healthcare providers. Now, more than just having a physician or a physician's assistant or a hospital administrator, I would hope we would be able to recruit somebody who had an expertise and passion in the area of substance abuse and addiction. And so, again, to make a, a, to make this as short as possible, I don't want to limit ourselves to somebody who's in the city or the school district. If you have somebody who's passionate about addiction and substance abuse, and conversely is passionate about this community and its future, I would like them to be able to participate and not limit that, that kind of involvement, if that makes sense.
Yes, yeah, it does. So, is there any reason for grant writing purposes for an area of service of this group to be defined? And I know for some federal grants, you, you have to define by metropolitan area or by county or by census unit or, but, but then...
That's probably, that's probably, yeah, that's probably a good, that's probably a good idea, and I, I personally believe it should be enumerated as the Celine community mirroring the school district. I think that's a good suggestion. You want to communicate that as well to Nick?
Sure.
Or, if I may, at least raise it as a question, because I don't know what the conditions of this kind of grant are, not being familiar with them, but...
Well, again, it, it is a coalition that mirrors the school district, that's why we have school district participation, that's why somebody is sent from the Public Safety Department of Pittsfield Township. It is certainly larger than the City of Celine.
The reason, if I may?
Please.
I mean, there is, on page six, there is criteria, talking about the nominating committee will give preference to prior applicants who meet the following criteria. There's three. One, show evidence of participation and involvement in activities that are complementary and supportive of the corporation's mission and values, meet any eligibility requirements for board positions, have a background and experience complementary to the work of the project.
But nothing regarding residents, is correct, yeah.
Right, yeah, I, I agree with all of that. I just wondered about the geographic aspect.
So, right, but I think that was, so not to limit, because of the, depending on the, again, if you had someone from, you know, a doctor or, you know, somebody from the courts or that, those types of things.
Right. Okay, thank you.
That's, in, in addition to the healthcare community, that's another deficiency that I, I currently observe, which is we don't have somebody from the prosecutor's office or from the courts, and that, that, that is a key group that, that should be at the table.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I see from the cover memo that it looks like the $800 filing fee will be paid for from the general fund.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? No? Okay, any, no additional questions or comments? How about discussion? No discussion? Well, it's been properly moved by Dylan, seconded by McClellan, to adopt and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-123. This is a series of five motions. This is staff appointments and contracts for fiscal year 17. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 10, 2016 memo from City Cam, the city manager Campell regarding annual non-union staff contracts.
Move to acknowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Dylan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. CEO. Before I turn it over to you, Mr. Campell, I do want to remind the audience, and of course, my colleagues at the dais, especially those who are new, we discussed this procedure, I believe, a year, a year and a half ago with our, one of our, one of the members of our legal team, Steve Gerard, our labor counsel. We talked about making some changes. We had a pretty thoughtful substantive discussion on that. We didn't, weren't able to develop consensus at that time as to how to move forward, but it's my opinion that perhaps, as a new group, we revisit that discussion and dialogue and perhaps schedule a meeting sometime in the not-too-distant future with, with our labor counsel to, to talk about that. That in no way is going to, those comments do not have any impact on my, what my approach is going to be relating to this motion, 16-123. I'll be voting in favor of all, of all five of these motions, as I have in the previous six years I've been on council, but I just want to acknowledge that for the record, and if people are inclined to continue those discussions, I would welcome that. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Campell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all may recall, during the budget work sessions, we included, let me, let me back up, so we have, of course, we have entered, this is the last year of the current, three of our, three bargaining units, so we're at the table with, with all three bargaining units going forward, as the current contracts will expire, actually, next week at the end of this month, June 30. And so, this is specific to non-union folks, and in, in the budget that, that was approved by city council for fiscal year 17, which is, goes into effect July 1 of this year, has steps, we call steps, because we have whether, so the, the non-union folks, we have more of a horizontal salary scale, in that it's, there's nine steps, depending on the grade that, that you're in, but, but nine steps, so in the budget are the steps, and then once somebody gets to that ninth step, then after a year at that, at that last step, then you qualify, doesn't mean you get or receive, but, but you qualify for at least a partial merit increase. That's very, the merit for the non-union is, is mirrored by the collective bargaining units, the unions, for their longevity payments for a number of years when they get, when they're done with their steps. So, having said that, this current budget was being proposed for steps, for those folks that still have steps, is being proposed, again, per budget, and then the, the merit, you'll notice there, the merit's not in the salary, just because by policy, the merit is, is solely given out by the, at the discretion of the city manager. So, this, the merit is, is not for city council approval, so that's why that is not, just a reminder, that's why that's not included in the overall request for approval. So, we're happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for the city manager? That was easy, all right. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I appreciate this merit program. It looks more reasonable than what I've seen in past years. It'll roll 2.9%, including the steps and increases, but as I've seen in my own organization, usually merit and cost of living are included in the same about dollar figure. We don't break it out into three different steps, so again, as I've expressed in past years, this process has been a very rewarding approach for staff, so I would like to continue to say that I think this is a very good program.
Additional comments, questions? No, then we'll proceed to vote on the first motion, which is motion A. It's been properly moved by Dylan, seconded by CEO to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We move on to, excuse me, are there any nays? My apologies, there are no nays. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to motion B. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the classification and compensation plan grid effective July 1, 2016 for fiscal year 17.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember CEO. Any comments or discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by CEO to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion C will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing staff and setting their compensation for a period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017.
Move to approve and adopt.
Moved by CEO to approve and adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Any comments? Any discussion? Ms. Dylan?
I just had a question. There are two line items, fire chief and the civil defense director, health services that are zero. Those are intentionally zeros, those will not change?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Additional comments or discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by McClellan, to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion D will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to adopt the resolution as submitted, appointing city officers for a period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and to acknowledge receipt and reading of ordinance number 786, an ordinance to amend the City of Celine code fixing the current compensation of elected officials, appointed officials, excuse me, and to approve and adopt or not to adopt said ordinance number 786 as submitted.
Move to approve and adopt, and approve and adopt.
Second, okay, it's been properly moved by Tahar to approve and adopt, and to approve and adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CEO. Any discussion on this? Again, I think this was, when we had our discussion with Steve Gerard some time ago, I believe, and I don't mean to be, I don't mean to put words in his mouth, but from his professional experience, this particular approach is a, a bit cumbersome and a little unusual. This is one of the things that I'd be interested in having a dialogue to see if there's consensus on changing it in the future. Again, I know we had a very robust discussion in the past, and there was not consensus to move forward, but if my colleagues were inclined to have that again at some point, it's not that time-sensitive, I would, I would welcome that. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Are you referring to the publication of this information, or...
Well, that the, that the ordinance has to be changed and amended annually.
Oh. No, at far, I feel this is fine. At least we have to identify to the public exactly what everybody's being compensated, so we don't have any question about transparency.
Ms. Tahar?
I was going to say, I, I believe I disagree with Mr. Gearbaugh. I, I, as I recall from the previous discussion at which we could not reach consensus with Mr. Gerard, it seemed to me that he had sensible suggestions for streamlining the process. I don't recall feeling that it was untransparent, so I would welcome a discussion again.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I, I also would, would be open to having a, a rediscussion of that, because I think there is a way to accomplish it without having to change the ordinance, which satisfies Mr. Gearbaugh's concerns.
Okay. What, how does the rest of council feel? That would be new to you, Mr. CEO, you were not part of that discussion, neither were you, Ms. McClellan, so you might find it enlightening.
Sounds like it.
Okay, Ms. Dylan?
Yes.
Okay. So, we can add that, maybe check with Steve and see what his availability is. I know it's limited, but, okay. Any discussion, a subsequent discussion on this motion? No, then it's been properly moved by Tahr, seconded by CEO to approve and adopt, or to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And now motion E will be a motion to approve or not to approve the employment contracts with appointed staff and officers for a period of July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor, city clerk, and manager to execute the employment contracts as submitted.
Move to approve and authorize.
Thank you, Councilmember CEO. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Thank you, ma'am. Is there any comments, questions on this? Any discussion? Mr. CEO, please.
I guess I just wanted to say, in the 41 years my wife and I have lived in the city of Saline, I've only seen the staff improve and get better over time. I appreciate their commitment and their striving continuously to provide the best service within reasonable financial expectations that are placed on them by the citizens. So thank you, folks. It's my pleasure to vote affirmatively on all these motions.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Any subsequent discussion or comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by McClellan to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-124. This is Rec Center Roof Evaluation Services. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 15th, 2016 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve... Excuse me, that Mays Consulting and Evaluation Services Incorporated in the amount not to... In an amount... Is that right? In the amount to... Not to exceed, excuse me. $12,784 to perform the roof investigation and evaluation services upon review and approval by the city attorney.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. Director Scruggs, do you care to make any comment on this?
I did want to talk just for a second.
Please.
We had two companies that had... We had identified that do these type of evaluation services. And we received quotations, or, you know, we gave them the scope of service, and they gave us their quotations. I had a chance to... Well, we actually did a face-to-face interview with Structure Tech and then an over-the-phone conversation interview with Mays, with Gary Mays. And the one thing you've probably read through a little bit, but Mays came in at a little bit higher rate than Structure Tech. And we did... Or I did some calls to references. And we looked at their proposal and looked at their experience and looked at... You know, they actually worked on facilities very similar to ours, aquatic facilities in particular. And I called the references. One guy, actually, I knew. He used to be a Parks and Recreation guy up here in Michigan, but he's now in Ohio. And we had a really good conversation. They... Very similar situation to our roof. They were having some bubbling and vapor barrier issues, which we think is one of our problems. But they were very satisfied with Mays. They did a lot of investigation. They're very thorough. Makes you feel very comfortable, very detailed, and, you know, highly recommended them. And then I had a chance to finally connect with one of the other references. Again, a very similar facility that we have. It's another facility a little bit bigger than ours, about 75,000 square feet. But they have used Mays, extremely satisfied with their work. They were able to provide the, you know, do the study, figure out what the, you know, the problem was, come right down to the source of it. And then they can also recommend whether, you know, tell us whether that's warranty issues, if it's workmanship issues or whatnot. So he's very, very well-versed. He can then... Mays can also then actually do the bidding for the renovation of it or whatever needs to be done in the construction and oversight of it. So the recommendations were outstanding. I think we would be well-served to bring them on board, so that would be our recommendation.
Thank you, Director Scruggs. Any questions for our Parks and Rec Director? Mr. CEO?
So the deliverables are then that they do an evaluation of what we have, a recommendation for what we need, and then they also help evaluate RFPs or...
That would be... That would be after, after the fact. If we want to hire them on to develop the RFPs and the bidding process and the supervision, that would be a different contract.
So the deliverable is just an evaluation?
Evaluation study and the inspection to let us know what happened.
Ms. McClellan?
Were you able to check the references for the other... the other option?
The... Let me find my notes. I did call...
I'm just curious if they have similar...
Well, they didn't have...
Projects.
They said that they had some experience with some of the schools. I had called... It was very difficult to get ahold of schools at this point. But Novi Schools and Birmingham Grove Schools, I did not talk with anyone. But they didn't... They didn't have very similar experiences. The guy... And maybe it was the guy they sent out for the interview. I got a feeling that he really didn't know exactly what they... what they did. I think it was the wrong guy to send to this meeting. But they have some experience, not to the extent of Mays, but they have worked with, like I said, Birmingham Groves and Novi Schools in particular that they gave us information on.
Please, Mr. Campbell.
Just to add, I mean, so the other folks did have someone on the phone that was more of a specialist. But again, to Ms. Scruggs' point, yes, they had similar experience, but not the same experience as we are having. And clearly, Mays Consulting has had that very same experiences multiple times.
Yeah.
Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted to clarify, is this in response to the current issue on the roof, or is this a separate issue?
No, this is definitely in response to the current roof situation.
And have we found out, is there any insurance coverage for...
We have to determine what caused it. That's what part of this is.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mayor Portem Rhodes?
Ms. Scruggs, you mentioned warranty in your earlier discussion. Is there still some warranty on the existing roof structure?
There would be. I believe it's a 25-year warranty. So again, we need to... We need to know from the experts what happened, if it is... If it is warranty. But I do believe everything is prorated. I don't know if that's the correct term.
Yeah, sure. And then I noticed in the proposal that we, the client, would be responsible for making the inspection cuts on the existing roof and then repairing those openings.
Correct.
Would that be our DPW department doing that?
No, we would... Probably Royal Roofing, which they did that. They would make the cuts, and then they would patch them right over.
Do you have any idea what the fees would be for those?
I don't right offhand.
Okay.
Anything else, Mayor Portem?
No, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gerbach?
And those won't violate any of our warranty by doing those inspections? I just want to make sure the same company that put the roof on... Because we got into this with the DPW center.
Right. Royal Roof is the company that put that in. And I think that's a very typical thing when inspections are done. They do have to make these test cuts, and then they patch them.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we've got the company that could challenge us for anything that we do.
Right.
Our base is covered because that was the problem with DPW.
Okay.
Additional questions for Director Scruggs? Carla, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on this motion? No? Okay, we'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Tahr to acknowledge receipt, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-125. This is formation of a historic district subcommittee... or study committee. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 16th, 2016 memo from HDC Staff Liaison Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the formation of a historic district study committee.
I'll move to acknowledge the receipt.
Okay, it's just been moved to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. We have our DPW Director, Mr. Fordice, here, as well as Ron Keenig from the Historic District Commission. Gentlemen, welcome. Ron, we appreciate your time tonight. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the... It's been roughly 10 years since we formed our last historic district. And the commission has been looking at the state of the city and development that's going on and feel that the time is right to study the potential to expand or create a new district and protect some additional valuable resources. So administratively, the steps of that are council authorized as a study committee. Then we would find members for that study committee. Council would then appoint them to the committee. Then a period of study happens. There's a lot of research that goes into it and preparation of a report, which would then be reviewed by the State Historic Preservation Office and eventually council. The council has the final say on whether or not a new district is formed. And Chair of the Commission is here, who can speak much more passionately and informantly about historic preservation than I can.
Very good. It's what you do for a living, so... Ron, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for having me. And it's kind of fun to see that half of you have served or are currently serving on the Historic District Commission, so it makes it a little easier to talk about this, actually. You know, we're... The suspensentennial is upon us. And we're here at a point where we want to celebrate our history and who we are because really, who we are is based on, you know, who we were. And understanding that is important, and also sharing that information with everybody. And so more and more, we're doing that. We're doing that at downtown celebrations, having trolley go around. We're actually giving historic tours. There's more of that planned for this year. And it makes sense to understand, to better understand which properties are really particularly significant and to tie those to the people who lived here and really who gave us, you know, what we have, the beginnings of the city. So I'm not going to go on and on and on about this, but the... What we're looking at right now are extending the boundaries of Henry Street Historic District, really connecting the historic districts in a way that has been encouraged by the State Historic Preservation Office. When we carried out the South Ann Arbor Street Historic District, one of the big comments that came back from the Choubo's office was that they don't like to do things piecemeal. They really like us to have historic districts that have context that's wider than what we were giving them. And so this is an opportunity to do that. It's also an opportunity to revisit properties that in the past may not have been considered contributing because... But because now we've gone through, now they're older, now we take a look at them and see if maybe they are now. And that does happen pretty regularly. So... Other questions?
No, that's good. Actually, you addressed one, Ron, which was, I remember from my tenure on HDC, that the complaint from the state was that our districts were a little linear, I think, was the terminology they used. So growing, expanding them, and making them more neighborhood-based, I think, is really appropriate. So I applaud the initiative. Are there any questions from my colleagues on council? Mr. Gerbach?
Just for my own benefit, was this brought forward from members of the individuals in the areas that aren't part of the district yet, or was this more of HDC's...
Members of the HDC, it came out of discussions. I mean, and we had discussions about how do we do things better? How do we update? I mean, you were just there, just on, obviously, but... And so I can't remember if you were part of those discussions. But over the last few meetings, we've had discussions about, okay, how can we do this better? How can we be seen as a real resource for the community? A lot of people see us as the people you got to go to and talk to if you're in a historic district so you can get stuff done. I don't... We don't want to be that commission. We want to be seen as a resource. We want to be seen as something that helps people along to care for their properties. And also that we're a part of the city and the city growing and becoming the best that it can be. So that's really what it grew out of.
No, it's just beneficial to have individuals from those areas being more the champions for it than just being part of it. So I agree with going forward with this. It's just getting them to participate, I think, is really the biggest key.
Mr. CEO?
Am I correct in believing that for something to be included in the HDC, it must be 75 years or older, or 50 years?
No, it's actually... It's dependent, but it's 40 years or older.
Forty.
So, yeah, so... And I need to check on that. I went to grad school a long time ago, and so... And I'm a conservator. I work with my hands. I do historic. And so planning is certainly something that I was trained in. It's something that I do as a part of the HDC. But let me check and make sure, but it's 40 years, I'm pretty sure.
As a follow-up then, if you establish an historic district and there's a home in there or a structure in there that's newer than whatever the number of years is to be proclaimed as truly historic, are they exempted from the district, or how does that work?
No, they're still part of the district. They're considered non-contributing. And changes made to those properties, we're a lot less likely... We're a lot more lenient. I mean, we're lenient anyway. I got to tell you that I was Chair of the Lansing Historic District Commission, too. And I'm... I know people that are on other HDCs locally. And we're... We really are pretty easy to work with. And that's something that we've prided ourselves on. I think, Mayor Mar, you have noticed that, too. So to answer your question, though, you know, interests change also. Mid-century modern architecture is something that's being celebrated a lot right now. People are really excited by it. And I've gone to two conferences in the last couple of years that... On mid-century modern architecture. Well, a lot of that stuff is, you know, has become popular because it's gotten old enough now that we're excited. We're all slightly embarrassed about the more recent past, but people really are interested, are really very interested in what, you know, is exciting and new. And does that answer your question?
It does, to a degree. One final question, of course, in Monroe Street, we now have two potential developments that are being considered for construction there. Do you folks have any say in the design of those before they even come to the table because they are within an historic district?
So you're talking, you know...
They're not within a historic district.
Included within a historic district.
They're not in the... No, but I mean, if this Monroe Street, I don't know how expansive it is or what the boundaries are that are being considered, but...
You know, we had...
So if you're in an established historic district, new construction would fall under the purview of the HDC. So they would have a role in reviewing that and making sure it's compatible with the rest of the neighborhood.
We work with development. I mean, it's happened before, so... Does that answer your question?
That does.
Okay.
Additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
Let me refresh my memory. There's a certain percentage of property owners that need to agree to move forward with the study for a historic district commission?
The... That's not necessary for the study. The study is... Part of the study is the process of informing the residents of the proposed district and getting people on board. The past councils, when we've declared historic districts, have required basically a petition with more than half of the property owners agreeing with the designation. That's not part of the ordinance. It's not part of the state legislation, but that's something that past councils have done.
Okay. Thanks.
At this point, we're just trying to figure what we have, right? Establish boundaries and figure out really whether it's appropriate to establish. And this is not... I mean, you will be involved in the process.
Right.
So this isn't the... You're not just going to sign off on it. We'll come back.
Right. It's a very inclusive process.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
No, my pleasure. Mr. Gerbach?
Just a comment from being a former Chair on the Historic District Commission was that in even recent years, we've had concerns just now with People's House and some of the specific homes that have come up as potential redevelopment. And those items have come up as concerns from neighbors and so forth. So I think this is a good idea to at least scope it out, to figure out how those individuals feel about that, and especially from the perspective of, we are seeing redevelopments in areas and larger properties and losing something as distinctive. And I know when you look at Monroe Street and you look at Henry Street, those are very distinct areas in which we have unique architecture, and the loss of some of those homes would be a detriment to the city. So I think this is a good approach to go forward.
Additional questions or comments? Ms. McClellan?
I would just echo what Dean says. As a resident of the West Henry District, the Monroe Street, and even East Henry have an effect on those neighborhoods, you know? So I think looking at the surrounding areas... so I think looking at the surrounding areas only makes sense in establishing more credibility, I guess, to those neighborhoods.
What we learned working on the South Ann Arbor Street Historic District, one of the things, a lot of things, but one of the things we learned is that it does tell a story. I mean, the people who lived on South Ann Arbor Street, the people who walked to work every day, and the people who live on, lived on East Henry, and also on Monroe, were involved in making, I mean, I wasn't just making it up, I mean, they, they were involved in, in the early history of the city, so understanding that part, and making sure that it, that there's a certain amount of protection, but also that we can celebrate it is a big part of what we're looking at trying to do.
Very good. Anything further? No? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your time. Any subsequent discussion? No, that's been properly moved by, actually, we're just voting to acknowledge, excuse me. So it's been properly moved by Councilmember Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to acknowledge receipt of the June 16th memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. How about a motion to approve or not to approve the formation of a Historic District Study Committee?
I will move to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve, was that seconded by McClellan?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda, how about Commission Committee or Task Force reports from council members? Mr. Har.
The Arts and Culture Committee was to have met this past Monday, a week ago today, and failed to achieve a quorum, which we attribute to the changing schedules of our members, a Monday morning meeting at one point was our means of being able to achieve a quorum, and, and it's not working anymore. So there will be a special meeting in the Arts and Culture Meeting Committee this Wednesday evening, I believe at six, for the purpose of finding a new meeting day and time.
Mr. Har, I appreciate you bringing up the Arts and Culture Committee, because of course you and I discussed this. I noticed today when I was speaking to Deputy Clerk Bloom that we received an application for one of the vacancies, would you make sure to forward that to Cindy Baxter and to Councilwoman Har?
Yes.
And maybe discuss that at your upcoming meeting, and maybe invite that, that individual to attend, but as you know, there's several vacancies on the Arts and Culture Committee, we would love to get those filled, so if you're a resident of the school district, not just the city of Saline, but if you're a resident of the school district and you're passionate about arts and culture in this community and leveraging new opportunities, I hope you'll consider one of those positions.
Especially if you're interested in working on projects.
Yes, yes. If you're a doer, we, we would love to, to have you be part of that group. Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force reports, Mr. Gearbaugh, then Mr. Rhodes.
Mayor, we're going to have a busy agenda on planning this week, two of the hot topics will be calling, talking about Curtis Cliffs, Bluffs?
Bluffs.
Can't remember. That is the redevelopment of the People's Property behind that area, and then also talking about the planned urban development, redesigning that as a new way of planning for the city. It'll come to council for final consideration, but anybody that has concerns about how we are trying to adjust our ordinances to accommodate developers, and probably better ways to handle our planning is going to be discussed at that meeting.
Mr. Rhodes?
The Environmental Commission also has an opening, we had an applicant, but his work schedule changed, so he was not able to attend the meetings, and he has withdrawn his application, so we have an opening there, and that would need to be a city resident.
Okay, very good. Appreciate the update on that. Additional Committee, Commissioner, Task Force reports, Ms. McClellan?
Just a reminder that Green Thumb nominations are still being taken, and the forms can be found online and at City Hall.
They also at the Rec Center? No, just at City Hall? Okay. Okay. Any other Commission, Committee, or Task Force reports? How about reports or other announcements? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a plug again for the Saline Historical Society July 2nd celebration of Wayne Clement's depot trial, that we'll be doing, naming it in his, in his name as a memorial. And also that the event will go from about 11 till 2:00 AM or 3, uh, sorry, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and there'll be tractors, and actually buggy and horse rides, and some other things, so encouraging everyone to attend. Again, that's July 2nd.
Very good. Mr. Seale?
Two things. Last week, I met with Peter and Barbara Fein in Germany, they're members of the Saline-Lindenberg sister city relationship from the Lindenberg side of the house, and they send their greetings and best wishes to the citizens of Saline from Lindenberg, Germany. Also a reminder that we're planning at this time a visit to send Salines to Lindenberg sometime in 2017. We're still trying to arrange the exact time and date, but for people in the community who might be thinking about wanting to visit Germany, they should consider maybe making the journey. They would be responsible for paying their own way over and back, but generally accommodations and, and so on are pretty much taken care of by the host families in the city of Lindenberg, and it's a wonderful experience. You needn't worry about not speaking German if you don't speak German, because ask any of us who've been there, we usually end up communicating even with them if they don't speak English all that well. You get your little pocket dictionary, and I think working back and forth through friendship, which is what this is all about, we generally end up communicating pretty well. So please, keep that in mind for next year. Also, Mr. Mayor, because I think this is our last council meeting between now and the Fourth of July, it came to mind both from a constituent mentioning it, and from an article I read online where some young man severely injured himself with fireworks on the west side of the state over the weekend, perhaps a recap, if we can, of whatever the fireworks rules are, I think now it's up to individuals, communities to pass regulations-
No.
-regulating fireworks?
No, no, unfortunately not. And that is, this is my commentary, Councilmember Seale, this may or not be shared by any of my colleagues on council or the city of Saline, but the current statute which we are forced to, to comply with, that I believe was passed in 2011, was passed recently, is one of the more poorly-written statutes to come out of Lansing in the last several years, of, of which there are many. But it enumerates a number of dates in which individuals can discharge fireworks, essentially commercial-grade fireworks, but it also allows them to discharge them the day before that holiday and the day after that holiday. Large municipalities, and I, I believe the statute defines large municipalities as communities of over 100,000, if I'm not mistaken, that, that number may be different, can regulate use to a, to a greater degree. We cannot.
Can't regulate hours either?
You want to comment on that? I believe the hours that are enumerated in the statute, they have to conclude by midnight or 1:00 PM, or 1:00 AM?
No fireworks the day preceding the day over, the day after, from 1:00 AM to 8:00 AM on that particular day.
Okay.
Otherwise, that's out of our hands.
Yep, so from the morning until, I go to bed early, so I, you know, I define somebody who's discharging a commercial-grade firework in a densely populated residential neighborhood at 12:50 to be a bit excessive. But, you know, again, state law supersedes local ordinance and what our, our local prerogative is. We have on numerous occasions talked about and communicated to the state that that, that statute should be amended.
Very good.
But people do have the right to discharge fireworks on the 3rd, the 4th, and the 5th.
Thank you for your clarification.
Yep. Mr. Gearbaugh?
And comment on that, I believe I read in our Saline post about our police officers have been enforcing that you should not be setting off fireworks prior to the time periods in which you're authorized by law. In fact, one individual according to the article was a little bit belligerent until the officer reminded him, and he complied.
Well, and I, and I-
I'm appreciative of our officers following up on that.
I would, I would add something to Mr. Gearbaugh's comments, which is if, if an individual or homeowner on the 3rd, the 4th, or the 5th thinks that someone is discharging fireworks and doing it in irresponsible way, or they're doing it at 1:30 or 2:00 in the morning, pick up the, the phone and call the police.
Very good.
I mean, I, I think that's critical.
If I could just-
Please.
Just to add to that, I mean, so I know we're obviously referencing the Fourth of July week, well, weekend coming up, but there's actually a total of 10-
Days.
-10 national holidays that, you know, that qualify for those-
So that extends it to 30 days.
Exactly.
30 days annually, so, okay. Any other reports or announcements? How about the, I asked at the last council meeting that everyone take an opportunity over the past few weeks to review the fiscal year 17 strategic plan, were there any questions or comments about that? No? Well, that makes it pretty easy, I think you can go ahead and publish.
Great.
All right? And then last, but certainly not least, is the Michigan Avenue makeover, I asked that this be added, specifically the traffic lights. I have to say that overall, I've certainly entertained a number of phone calls and emails and conversations at CBS, and at the grocery store, and post office about the US-12 construction project, I think for the most part, it's, it's going well. People were primed that there would be delays and inconveniences, but they understand that with a, a project of this magnitude and scope, that, that's going to happen. The one concern that I've received from numerous people is the timing of the traffic lights on, that would be Ann Arbor Street, Harris Street, and Henry Street, that the timing seems to be appropriate during the, for rush hour traffic, but seems to be excessive, especially for those who are north and southbound midday or late in the evening. So I wanted to bring this up and have the city manager comment on that, and I believe we have a, a guest here as well, is that, is that correct?
We do. Tom Gray from Fishbeck Thompson Car and Huber, they're, the construction engineer is for MDOT, and so I thought we'd go right to the top and, and as they say, and have Tom come in and talk to us.
Well, Tom, thank you for being here, and thank you for staying to get to the meeting, bless your heart.
No problem.
Do you want to comment on this issue at all?
Yeah, I guess a, a little background on what, what we've done to date out here. You know, obviously, a significant project like this, we realize there's going to be some pretty severe impacts to traffic, you know, and the first week out here was, was rough, and typically during that timeframe, you know, traffic is settling into its normal routines, once, once you disrupt them, it takes a bit for everything to settle down and fall into place. And while that was happening, we were observing and adjusting the signage where we could, we were talking to the MDOT Signals Unit about some possible changes to stuff, there were some pedestrian signals that were added just before the detour was implemented that also impacted timing out there. And it's been an ongoing discussion with them, there, there are different timing sequences that have been put into place for off-peak hours. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that it's perfect out there, but part of the problem is when we start adjusting these signals, you know, obviously with Henry Street now accepting the, the eastbound US-12 traffic, significant volume of cars out there on, on that roadway, discussions with the design staff have been that, you know, there are concerns that if significant changes are made to allow more, more green time for the local streets to access that, that cars may start piling up on, on Henry Street, which, you know, once that starts to happen, it's very difficult to, to clear that traffic and that, so we are still working with them, trying to, to get them back out to review things, and, and still continue to tweak and adjust and, and do what we can, but there, there are impacts to it, so.
Sure.
There's, I guess a little background on the process, you know, typically during the design phase, and unfortunately I wasn't part of that, so I can't speak to detail, but typically, you know, the traffic is modeled during that time, you know, traffic volumes are studied, the various intersections, it's put into a computer program, and, and the timing optimized to try to move the most cars through the intersection possible. And unfortunately, with the volume of traffic that's on, on Michigan Ave, you know, there, there are significant impacts to, to the local streets. One of the things that we're doing out there, we're, every day we're monitoring traffic, you know, so one of my staff members will go out and drive the detour route, you know, we knew how long it takes to go through the project limits on Michigan Ave before the project started, and since that time with the, the traffic over on Henry Street, that time has more than doubled to traverse the detour route. So that traffic's already, you know, significantly impacted itself, so I don't know what else to say other than it's going to be a long summer, you know, we are working to, to take care of things as much as possible, we understand the complaints, there's been some good suggestions brought forward that we've looked at. Mr. Rhodes, you commented on the possibility of adding left turn phases on, I believe, South Ann Arbor, and unfortunately, the geometric conditions there aren't suitable for that, you know, so there, there are some federal guidelines that we have to, to work within that, that prevent some of those solutions from being implemented. But we are looking at stuff, and we are trying to take care of things when we can.
Well, we appreciate the update, and I appreciate the fact you continue to monitor this situation, I'm, I'm very cognizant that there is no perfect solution, not with a project of, of this magnitude and scope. And I do have to say again, and I, I drive quite a bit throughout Washington County, of course in Saline, this is where I live, this is where I work, I think movement on Michigan Ave for the most part has been pretty good, I've been impressed with how quickly I can navigate Henry, it's there, you know, the only problem that I've observed in the last several weeks is just a few issues north and southbound, especially on Ann Arbor Street.
Yeah, and I see that daily.
Yeah.
I check the Google Maps of the traffic every day, and I see the backups, and I realize what's happening, and it's a, like I said, it's a really fine balance, because to give significant enough green time on Ann Arbor and Harris, it's going to impact Henry, so.
Okay. Questions or comments? We'll start with Mayor Brotem Rhodes.
My, just comments. I travel northbound several times each day, either from on South Ann Arbor Street, or Harris, or, or Old Creek, and whatever tweaking has been done in the off-peak hours really seems to have improved the situation. I don't find myself sitting there nearly as long as what I used to, either that or I've just gotten used to it. But thanks.
Yeah. Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, I echo Mr. Rhodes' comments, and as a resident of West Henry Street, I have to just compliment you on the flow on my end of the street has been really much better than I expected it ever to be. So I do see, my biggest issue, and what, from constituents have heard, that Old Creek is kind of the big, with the turning lane confusion, and people stopping at when they're supposed to be turning right, and, so I don't know if there's any, any tweaking that's going to happen or can happen at that intersection as far as signage, or the way that light is-
So are you, are you referring to the intersection of Old Creek and Henry?
Old Creek and Henry, and then Old Creek and Michigan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, that's one of the areas in the detour route that's a, a particular problem. The other area was on Monroe, and both of them are compounded by the short distance between Henry Street and Michigan Ave. On Monroe, you know, that's now free flow there, traffic on Monroe doesn't stop to turn onto Henry Street, and that's, that's fixed that problem. Now on the east end of town, that's completely a different animal, we have the same distance issue there, so there's not enough room to get good signage in there and get people distance enough to see the signs. We've done a variety of things there, we've, we've added some signs, we've added flags on top of the signs, the, the problem there is, is that the current lane assignments aren't intuitive, okay? It's just not normal for people to have to get over that left lane to go through and left, and that issue is compounded by the fact that there just isn't enough sight distance to get people to see those, those signs in, in advance. Originally, the plans called for that left lane to be a through lane, and what we found when we got out there was that for the residents to actually live on Michigan Ave between Old Creek and, and say Davenport, there was no detour route posted to get them back home, you know, so we ended up modifying that left turn lane, or that left through lane to include the left turns. When we allowed that, you know, that also increased, you know, some backups as a result of that, but, you know, we had to provide that, that signage and, and to allow residents to actually turn left and, and access their property. So it's just a very tough area, and we've kicked around all kinds of ideas in our progress meetings, so we've been communicating with the police department, police chief on it, city staff, and like I said, we're looking at all the possibilities we can, but it's going to be a sticking point through the rest of the project.
Yeah, I would just say, just say that I think people are getting used to it, that they know, you know, they get honked at, or they get pulled over when they don't, when they go straight through at that right turn instead of turning, so hopefully that'll help a little bit.
Great. Mr. Gearbaugh?
I was just going to say, it seems that your signage and everything has helped defer the number of trucks coming through town, it seems like they are- It seems like they are taking the detours and not necessarily flowing through here. Does that seem accurate?
I think it is. You know, you still get the one apparent, you know, occasionally that will come through, but, you know, they do communicate a lot, you know, with each other, so they know what areas to avoid, you know. So it does seem, though, that truck traffic has dropped.
Yeah, I think the only concern we had was when MIS, of course, that caused all the delay, and that was the worst time that I think I've experienced trying to get through town, so.
Yeah.
You know, that'll happen twice more.
And the race timing was added to the signals on the detour route as well. That was another one of the modifications that happened just the week before the race, you know, knowing that that's going to be an issue.
Mr. Seale?
I've noticed, I live on the east side of town, so I'm impacted mostly by the traffic on Old Creek. Now, the schools have closed, that's improved that a lot, because early in the morning when people are trying to get to work, there were a lot of parents taking their children to the middle school, I think, in individual vehicles, and now that the school's closed, a lot of that traffic has abated. So the period in the morning when you're trying to get through that intersection at Old Creek and Henry, or Old Creek and Bemis, or whatever we call that right there, has abated. So it's improved, and I'm sure that people are seeking alternate routes to get there. I know a couple of times I've gone down Flat Road and down Wells to avoid the entire mess.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a fine balance, you know. One of the concerns that we have, you know, when you do start adjusting the timing on the signals, if you get it wrong and you get gridlock, then everybody avoids the downtown area.
Right.
And it doesn't take too many times that occurring for that to happen. And obviously, with a project this magnitude, we want to do everything we can to help support the businesses downtown and make sure that access is available to them, so.
Well, your efforts show, and I appreciate it.
No, thank you. Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted to make a comment that I do feel as though motorists need to be a little more patient and really appreciate and acknowledge intersections and stop blocking the box, because that causes immediate backups, especially because some of the lights are not timed sequentially. And if you're blocking an intersection, I sat at Harris Street the other day through five lights because nobody wanted to give up their spot on Michigan Avenue. And so people passing through just need to understand that if you block the intersection, it's not just your direction that's being backed up, it's every other, everyone else.
Mr. Hart, do you have anything?
My comments were about the Old Creek Maple Michigan Avenue intersection, and that's already been covered. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, if there's nothing further, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one final item that the city manager would like to provide an update on, which is the old maud tracks, which we discussed at our last council meeting. So I'm going to turn the floor over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may recall, we talked briefly about this, I believe, at the last meeting, and the kind of hiccup we had was trying to find an efficient way to cut them into reasonable-sized pieces. And so Mr. Fordice and his crew have finally determined through a different, getting a different head on their cutting torch, more efficiently, but there's also, there's a lot of, for those of you that have seen them, they're covered in concrete, right? And so you've got, not only you need to cut the track, you need to remove the majority of the concrete so you can cut it. So roughly estimated, we figured about 15 bucks a cut is what we're, when you factor in the amount of cut time as well as the amount of time to remove the concrete. So, you know, if we, the thought was, you may recall, of maybe some sort of a, you know, some sort of a, kind of a fund, if you will, fundraiser to sell something reasonable, you know, not trying to gouge anybody by any stretch of imagination, but something to, you know, you could essentially get a historical piece of Celine history, and then we would put that towards, you know, basically towards the Streetscape project. So any suggestions, you know, you know, are we talking, you know, 12-inch or so, you know, a couple-foot piece, you know? Well, I think 12 is-
Just a question, how long's it taking to do this, to cut up a piece? I don't want to see your staff have to spend two days cutting it up.
Well, it will take a lot of time to cut these pieces. That $15 figure includes the labor time, so that's, you know, labor and the torch.
But I'm seeing, if it's going to be a fun-
Otherwise, yeah, it's not something, we will be able to knock them all out in one week, you know, we'll do a section of track to kind of fill in in the time schedule.
So it's a fundraiser-type thing? And that's the thing, I'm saying, if it's fundraiser, we need to price it right to cover all our costs.
Sure.
But also, I don't want to see it be where they're spending significant time on that. There's enough other items that we're doing.
Well, firstly, I think 12 inches would be the maximum, I think, or maybe even a little bit smaller, maybe 10 to 8 inches would be sufficient. Did you all determine, do you have a price in mind if it's a foot or less?
My, I thought it was like 25 bucks.
Yep. I think that's reasonable. And again, I think there was broad consensus at the last meeting that a larger section, a nice section, be provided in the Historic Society for free.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely, yes.
I'd have to have them come up and select their, before we start.
And then it would be first come, first served?
Absolutely, yes.
I don't know where, just, you know, where these would be sorted, yeah, first in place.
Yeah, well, yeah, I just want, we'll figure that out with staff. As far as promoting it, you know, I know we've already have, there's already a couple downtown businesses that have expressed interest in getting, you know, a couple pieces, so, you know, so if they want to, again, if they want a bigger piece than, say, 12 inches, then, you know, we charge accordingly, right? So, but anyway, so.
Everybody, if I may?
Please.
Everybody's good then with approximately 10 to 12 inches, 25 bucks a section?
I'd support $25 a foot, and if somebody wants two feet or three feet of it, if there's enough material to do it, then it's $25 times each of those. And it's $25 for a minimum piece. If somebody wanted one inch, it's 25 bucks.
Yep. Okay, all right. Any objections to that, Mr. Hart?
No, and just to clarify, the first 15 goes back to the DPW Personnel Fund line? Or not?
I would say it should.
Okay. That would be my preference.
Yep. I don't think there's any objection to that. Feel like you got consensus on that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, excellent. Well, if there's nothing further under the discussion portion of the agenda, we move on to citizen comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizens may come forward at this time, make comment or question to the city council. This public period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, Fourth of July celebrations. Years ago, it was firecrackers and sparklers. Now it's bottle rockets. And is it true that you're supposed to keep the bottle rockets on your property, or can you blow them off into the park? That has been done for the last couple of years. Also, if it gets super dry, which it is now, I know as far as getting a burn permit from the fire chief when it's real dry, is that a cautionary thing to take under advisement if there is no rain and if it is dry? Also, like I said, the bottle rockets are going in other people's property. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
Additional citizen comments? Please.
Mr. Peters, 509 Spring Brook. Just to remind folks here tonight and folks perhaps viewing that we've got two great events coming up here in early July. One, Mr. Gearbaugh just talked about, and that's our, the Celine Historic Society will be having a Fourth of July celebration on the 2nd of July, Independence Day, and that will be at the Depot Museum between 11:00 and 3:00. We'll have our velocipede out, our pumper car, you can ride up and down the rails, buggy rides with a horse and buggy. We're going to be handing out copies of the Constitution, and the food will be, it will be by Qantas and Lyons and some other things, kids' games, so it should be fun. The other second big event coming up in July, of course, is our 21st Annual Celtic Festival. 21 of them already so far. It's, of course, Celine's largest festival. This one will be at Mill Pond Park. It'll be on July 8th and July 9th. Friday night is pub night between 5:00 and midnight, and Saturday, which is the 9th, is our main festival from 10:00 to midnight. This year, we have 14 bands coming. Everything from Irish rock to ladies that play harps. We have three stages that go all day long, so just pick the type of music you like, sit down, enjoy it. We have all of our, our beer will be craft beer from the Michigan Brewers Guild. Our food will all be Michigan food vendors, so we try to keep as much Michigan as possible. We have Irish football this Friday, that the Friday that the event on the 8th, that'll be, it's like rugby, it's Irish football. We have the Highland athletes competing, we have 30 athletes coming, caber throw, hammer throw, sheaf toss. We have nine different dance troupes this year and workshops, including our Highland dancers who will compete, there's about 40 of those dancers who compete. We have contact jousting, sheepdog herding demonstrations, historic reenactors, living histories, they have shows and demonstrations all day. Our Scottish textiles, there are ladies down here weaving and dyeing wool. We have over 20 merchants' tents this year, and they'll be selling everything from jewelry to crafts to clothing. Our farmer's market will be down there on Saturday, and we have a local merchants' tent, and we have a local Celine business tent. So any Celine business people like to come down and interface with the public and set up a table and talk about their business, they're welcome to come down. Clans and societies we have, this year, the UN Clan is having their annual reunion. There'll be about 15 members down there, just the UN Clan. We have our Master of Mayhem obstacle run, it's like a Warriors run, an obstacle course run. It'll be Friday and Saturday, and they'll also have a tug-of-war. And their We Folks area and Celtic Survivors are mostly for kids, they have games, events, and a kids' parade, very, very well organized, well-run. Of course, Million Mill Pond Monster will be in a lake for two days. So come on down, it's a good time, and the first two weeks of July, there's an awful lot happening here in Celine. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Additional citizen comments? Well, let me just say, first of all, Mr. Peters, thank you for providing us an update on the Celtic Festival. I apologize that I did not do it during the discussion portion of the agenda, but you did a much better job than I would have done. I do want to acknowledge as well that each one of my council colleagues will be receiving an email invitation to the opening ceremonies at the Celtic Festival on July the 9th, so I hope that you'll be able to join us for that. And it is a great event, and interestingly enough, it will happen before our next council meeting because the first Monday falls on a fourth. So I'm particularly grateful that you made that announcement. To Mrs. Hess's concerns about fireworks, I can admit without reservation, I have fired off a number of bottle rockets over the years, in fact, a great many of bottle rockets over the years, and I'm not sure that it's, if one is capable of controlling where the debris lands, especially on a city lot. It would be different, of course, if you were out in the country, which is, or out in the country, which is one of the issues with the legislation, is it doesn't really take into account rural properties versus urban ones. But what I would say about dryness is anytime an individual feels that a neighbor or somebody in their vicinity is discharging commercial-grade fireworks and it is a detriment to public safety, call the police. It's just as simple as that. And they would welcome your phone calls and be happy to deal with the situation. Again, I'll ask one more time if there are citizen comments. Looks like there are not, so please note that our next meeting is on July the 11th with a work meeting at 6:00 to discuss the sale of Lot 20 in the Sauk Business Park, and then we have a meeting the following week with a work meeting beginning at 7:30 to discuss redevelopment-ready communities. Again, there are no absences to excuse, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:33 p.m. Seconded by Seale, seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting is adjourned.